Planning and zoning meeting to order, and I have roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Land.
Yeah.
Mary Scott. Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Susak is here.
Okay, can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
He's a flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Where it stands. One nation. One nation. Under God. Good God.
Religion.
The justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we.
I see them, I see the mayor.
Oh, he's there.
I see him, there he is, a good looking guy, look at him.
There he is.
How you guys doing, sorry, I couldn't find my, actually, my, I couldn't find the, the thing.
The link, yes. Okay, I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Mike Ludwig. Welcome, Mike.
Um, Lori, you're the host, so you have to be the one to record.
Oh, right.
Sorry.
Welcome, am I, you, good to go, guys, hear me?
Yes.
We hear you.
Welcome, everyone, tonight is the, your annual meeting where you appoint the chairman and the officers of the committee, I am standing in till, again, that is done, so I'll be here briefly. People wonder why I'm here, again, do I get the meeting going, tonight is Thursday, November 12th, regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, about 7:05 PM. Again, I'm the mayor, Mike Ludwig, thank you for the invite, I'm glad to be here, so I have a motion from someone on the floor to name the next chairman.
I nominate Ken Nelson, Frank Alamo.
The motion's been made by Frank, Commissioner Alamo, do I have a second?
Linda DeGray.
Linda DeGray, so I have a motion in the second, is there a motion to close nominations, or is there another nomination?
It's all moved.
So the motion to close nomination was by Frank, by Frank Alamo, seconded by Rich Susak. All those in favor of closing nominations, by a show of hands, or I say aye?
Aye.
Any extensions? Sounds like Lori, it's unanimous, now any discussion on the main motion? Hearing a roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Land.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is four.
Congratulations, Ken.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, and I think my work here is done, you give me the tough jobs, and I don't think you need, I don't think you need me anymore.
Sounds good, thank you, Mayor Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Mike.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, I will accept motions for vice chair.
I'm out motion that Linda DeGray be vice chair.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Alamo, any other nominations for vice chair?
I move the, the election, the nomination be closed.
It's all moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Linda DeGray.
Linda DeGray. Charles Land.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Linda DeGray.
John Petronella.
Four.
Then, Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is for Linda DeGray.
All in favor, none against, congratulations, Linda. Uh, and now I will accept nominations for vice, vice chair.
I nominate Jenny Higley.
Second. I, I didn't hear that, what was that?
I said I nominated Jenny Higley.
Which, okay, thank you. And I seconded it.
Okay, any other nominations?
Close nominations.
Okay, and Charlie, I hope you know, you have my full support behind you if you decided to run for vice vice chair, but this is your decision that you chose not to run for it again, so I think you did a wonderful job as vice vice chair, and you would have made a great vice chair or chairman, so I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, did we close nominations?
We did.
Okay.
I did, I seconded. I seconded by Commissioner Alamo.
Still need roll call.
Right.
Nelson.
Jenny Higley.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Land.
Jenny Higley.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frank Alamo.
Jenny Higley.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is for Jenny, Jenny Higley, Virginia Higley.
That's all in favor, none against, congratulations, Jenny.
Thanks, Ken, thanks to everybody.
You're welcome, Jenny. Now answer your phone.
Excuse me.
Thank you.
Okay, and now I will accept nominations for the secretary.
I nominate Rich Susak.
Second.
Motion's made by Linda DeGray and seconded by Charles Land, any other nominations?
I make a motion with questions.
Sir, second. Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Higley, all in favor of closing nominations, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Land.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
She's muted.
Yeah, but she said four.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
John Petronella.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is four.
Okay, all in favor, none against, congratulations, everyone, and I look forward to working with you all again, thank you. Next, can I get an approval of the minutes of October 22nd, 2020?
Removed. Removed.
Motion's made by Commissioner Susak, seconded by Commissioner DeGray, any comments, concerns, or alterations? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, okay, minutes passed, next up is public. Sure?
Uh, we didn't do, well, I know roll call should probably come before election of officers, but we didn't do official roll call for the meeting. And the only reason I bring that up is just that we don't know which alternate is seated.
Okay. At this point.
Roll call, I'll, I'll do roll call again, Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Land.
Yeah.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Susak is here.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to see, uh, commis-
Oh.
Yeah, Jenny, you're taking bets.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Grillo. And, does that fill it, or can I seat them both, Rich?
Um, I think only one, because Mary Scott is the only commissioner who's not.
Dane Thoroughgood.
He's not on anymore.
He was alternate.
Right, but he still, oh, he wa, okay, I'm sorry.
Right, so we can only fill out a regular seat, and I think that's Mary Scott.
Okay, so we, I'd like to see Commissioner Grillo for this meeting. Okay, now, continue, public participation, anyone out there who would like to speak in regards to matters related to planning and zoning that are not on our agenda? Feel free to speak up at this time, please refrain from personal attacks. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, moving on, do we have any bond releases this evening?
No bond releases.
No bond releases, okay, continued public hearing, public hearing 2986.
So the applicant for this application is not here, he has requested that the application be, or the public hearing be continued to the next meeting of December 10th. He did propose new, or edits to the proposed text amendment, which we sent out to you when we received them, those are now at the town attorney's office being reviewed, so the applicants requested just to be continued until that review is complete.
Okay, and we got that in writing, Jen?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, just, just as a question, I had a concern about, you know, one of the, I guess, parameters of that.
We really shouldn't be discussing the questions on a public hearing.
All right.
Without the hearing open, sorry, Commissioner Susak.
Okay.
I, I, I know what your question is, and we could discuss it outside of the meeting with staff if you'd like.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to table the public hearing?
I'll make a motion that we continue public hearing 2986 to our next meeting of December 10th.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Alamo, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, seeing none, it's unanimous, thank you. Moving on, new public hearings, public hearing 2987.
You know, I, there's a advertisement, so I'm gonna read the advertisement, as well as the roll call, so I'll start with the Infield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, November 12th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, online. Concerning the following application, public hearing 2987, 43 Lake Drive, special permit and site plan review application for the division. Lot Jeffrey Floss, owner applicant, map 97, lot 69, R33 zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Land.
Yeah.
Virginia Higley. Frank Alamo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Yeah.
And Richard Susak is here.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, we're both here.
Uh, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Jeffrey Floss.
Angela Floss, 43 Lake Drive, Infield, Connecticut.
Welcome, thank you, tell us a little bit about what you'd like to do.
You can say.
Okay, so it's just, when we purchased our land, it was merged automatically, and we would like to just un-merge, and we went to speak to the town, and they said, they showed us the regulations, and we have given you guys a a, we don't have the PDF, though we have the actual survey done of the lot, and we basically wanted to split it in. Um, I have something I wanted to share with you guys, uh, I don't know if you can see when we, when I share something, can you see this?
Yes.
Can? Okay, so here is an actual photo of the lot, this is the street view, and so it's just a residential area, it's right on Crescent Lake, so the road's in the front view there, our house is on the right side, there's another house on the left side, and it's just a big, green, grassy area. And here is the view from the back of the lot to the front. So it's just a big, giant piece of very easily developable, developable land, and then you have this that you got from us. That's explaining, here's our site where we're at now, here's, here's the proposed cutting the lot, you know, into two pieces. Um, and here is the lot, right here, with the proposed, proposed house and a proposed driveway, and then here's all the math done over here for you, so that you can see that the footage, the frontage is 81 feet, that's the proposal, and it's a big lot, it's 15,790 square feet. And Crescent Lake has very small lots, so this is a nice, big, developable, developable lot.
Okay, questions from commissioners? I, I just have one first, is the, looking at the site plan, the lot to the left has no frontage on it? It only has frontage on the lot to the right? Or is that total frontage? No, that's not total frontage.
You talking about up here, the site plan?
No, down, and even there, you don't have any frontage on that, and then down lower, right there, you don't have any.
This is the frontage right here, and it shows 81 feet.
Where does it show 81 feet?
Right over here, too, see, it says lot one, it tells you the, the, right along here, too.
Oh, okay.
All the lot frontages are here, um, and then this right here explains how they decided that 90 feet was the average, but you can see some of the frontages and on Crescent Lake are only like 27 and a half feet, the frontages are very small, so they go from 27 up to the big lot at the end, that's larger than that.
Yeah, so, Ken. Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So, uh, it's the, the frontage is the, the length of the arc, because it's on a curve.
Yeah.
So that's 75.37 feet, plus the eight feet, which is linear. You see that?
Right, and I just, on the site plan, like on the top one, there's frontage on every single lot up there, except the particular lot, and then on the lower one, we have frontage on the actual plot plan on the right, but not on the left, and it only shows it over on the right-hand side. And just, you know, we had a situation with an apartment where they left out a bunch of numbers, and it worked out that the numbers did not work out, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. No, it was.
For the record, that the lot to the left is gonna have 81 feet of frontage.
Correct, so that's a six, I think, yeah, okay.
81.47, it's 81.37.
Yeah.
Eighty-one. Total.
Okay, it was just clarification, normally it's on the site plan, so.
Yep.
All right, commissioners, any questions?
Is, is the lot that's getting split off gonna be for a future development?
It's for that proposed home, a proposed home, and the, yeah.
Yeah, we would like to see somebody build a house.
It would be nice to have some.
We're not planning on doing something.
We're not going, we're gonna sell the lot.
We're gonna sell it as is.
So right now, it'll be yours to maintain and keep up.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners? I can't see your hands, so if you want to speak up, please. Okay, hearing none, I have a couple of questions, uh, Lake Road, when's the last time it was paved?
Lake Drive was paved probably three or four years ago.
Three or four years, just recently, the whole lake was paved, yeah.
Okay, uh, do you know if there is currently a sewer line and water line stubbed into the property?
Is, yes.
There is.
Yes.
And Lori, has engineer made any comments, engineering? You're muted.
So, uh, maybe Jen could add to that, but on the plans, they showed the stubs for sewer and water hookups.
Okay.
Uh, let me pull the, if it wasn't in the staff report, then probably not, and let me.
Jen, if you could, could you put the GPS ladder, uh, map up, too, if you get a chance?
Um.
If they take theirs down.
So Mrs. Foss will have to.
Yeah, Mrs. Foss will take that down, just.
Stop sharing.
All right, one thing.
Thank you.
No, we did not receive any comments on this one, probably because it was a simple lot split, but all right, now let me, let me get the, let me get the G, uh, GIS up.
Well, I, I mean, the only reason I'm asking is because the, the sewer line and the water line does not show a lateral to the property, it shows a new lateral going to the new proposed house, and normally you would have laterals on your site plan showing that they do exist to the property. Um, so that would be a question I have for engineering, is if they are there, and my concern is with a newer paved road, just driving down Post Office Road and seeing how many times they've cut this road up already, and it was just paved, it's ridiculous, but my next question would be, is the footing drain from, I believe it's your existing home?
Correct.
Yes.
Runs, runs, runs right across the front yard of this property, are you gonna do some sort of an easement across the property to protect your footing drains?
We can do whatever we think we need to do, we, that really doesn't need to be here, it's existing, doesn't really be there. Um, we put a we had them put it there, though, because that's, you know, we were just, we're going, maybe something ourselves or a relative was gonna build that, it'd be such a desire. My daughter bought her own home and stuff, so it's not gonna be something family will want, but arrange it however you want us to.
No, no, it's, it's it's fine that it's there, it's just to protect your footing, your footing drains to your existing home, you may wanna add to, if this passes, you may wanna add it to the deed of this property that there is an easement across the front yard for your footing drain, so if anything ever happens, you have a right to dig it up and fix them. I mean, if you ever go to sell your current home, you're gonna want that to protect yourself, so it, I, I don't have a problem with it at all, so I'm just, for your sake, you may wanna add that, because a lot of people don't realize that, and next thing you know, the neighbor digs it up, and there's nothing you can do about it.
There, uh, that was actually a suggestion of the building department as well.
An easement or moving it?
An easement.
Yeah, okay, yep.
And I would, I would recommend that that be a condition of approval.
Yeah, and, and it's more for your protection than anything else, so.
We agree.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Yes, are we, we're not seeing lot 65, is that on here? The proposed site is 65, right?
43.
43. Right here.
Okay, I see it now, thank you. I just wanted to see if it had, um, lake frontage, thank you.
I was just gonna add one more thing, that I remember back when we built the house in 1984, there was two waters and two sewer connections, because it was two separate lots back then, and we merged together, so the connections are there, we shouldn't have to dig.
Say 45, and they had, everything was put in there, we just did, we just decided to not keep it separate, I don't know why, so, what we're doing. But you can see it's 41, 43, 45's missing.
Right, a-again, that can just be a condition of approval, it's just to make sure that the contractor who does the roadwork at whatever time, I, I think they have special restrictions on new roads, that contractors have to be bonded for so much money, because let's face it, some of these roads have been patched by not-so-qualified people. But that, again, that's only my concern, and I don't see an issue with it. Commissioners?
Just back to that, um, the four, the number 43, so on, on a, on a map provided by the applicants, I'm seeing 65 up there, is that?
And that's, that's what the town has, it's like 63, 68.
That's the old, the old school map.
Old original.
Doesn't relate.
I just, I just wanna be sure that going forward, and, you know, however this ends up, if there's an approval, you know, that, you know, we're identifying the correct lot based on our, you know, town records and what we're seeing before us tonight, just a little, I'm just a little confused, and as long as that's clarified, so again, you know, going forward, you don't have an issue with developing the wrong lot, I don't know, I've seen a different number, kind of just jumped out at me.
If I'm correct, Commissioner Alamo, what you're looking at on the screen is the address of the property. So 41, it skips 45, which would make that justify what they're trying to do, which tells me that at one point it was two separate lots, and then 47, 49, what you're looking at on their site plan is the parcel ID number, not the street number, and it is confusing, and, you know, especially in a situation like this, sometimes they do, also known as 43 Lake Road. But, I mean, this really justifies their case that it, you know, at some point it was designated to be a second lot, or it was, and then back in the 70s, the town took that from somebody.
Yeah.
Um, these people are just trying to put it back.
Oh, no, I understand, and I, you know, I'm not questioning what their integrity is here, I just didn't want them to see, I didn't want anybody to have an issue down the road when it came to filing, or dividing, or when they go to sell the other lot, or any of that, just, I seen two different numbers, so just thank you for clarification.
Right, so I mean, worst case, then, you know, the new lot will be 43, and the existing home would become 45 Lake Road, which, you know, they'll have to take care of that, but, um, any other questions before I open it to the public? Mr. and Mrs. Foss, anything you'd like to add before I open it to the public? No? Okay, seeing none, at this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak in favor or against public hearing 2987, 43 Lake Drive? If so, please just speak up. Going for the second time in favor or against, public hearing 2987 for the un-merging of two lots at 43 Lake Drive? And going for the third time. Seeing none, how would the commission like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we close public hearing, um, 2987.
Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner DeGray, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions? All in favor, okay, how would you like to proceed, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for a public hearing 2987 as prepared by town staff dated November 12th, 2020. With the 18 total conditions indicated, in terms of we added one site-specific, previously they did not have a site-specific condition, but we added one for, to make it a total of 18 with and that site-specific condition would be an easement be added for the footing drains across the adjacent lot. You know, in, you know, their, you know, acquisition or selling of the adjacent lot.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded by Commissioner Alamo. Okay, roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Land.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
We lost her.
She's there, but she's muted.
Okay.
Can we go back to full screen?
Four, four, four.
Thank you.
Frank Alamo.
Four.
Yeah, um, Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Susak is four.
All in favor, none against, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you, thank you so much, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
You too. Moving on, public hearing 2988.
Um, the Infield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at their next regular meeting on Thursday, November 12th, 2020, um, at 7:00 PM online concerning the following application, public hearing 2988, 135 Freshwater Boulevard, special permit and site plan review application for construction of a new 5,040 square foot building with associated parking and outdoor stores associated with many solutions facility, Hart Zito Investment LLC, and South Metals Number 9, C, owner applicants, map 56, lot 24, IP zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Charles Land.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alamo.
Here.
Uh, John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
Richard Susak is here.
Okay, is there anyone for the applicant here?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Dave Zaiex, I'm a professional engineer with FA Husker Associates, we're located down in East Granby, and we're representing the applicant this evening, I believe Sean DeBella is, uh, somewhere hiding in the virtual world up there, uh, who is representing the applicant, if you have any questions for the applicant. The application is for 135 Freshwater Boulevard, and I think my share button's on. There we go. I have a little, little, uh, PowerPoint presentation. And the, the site is six point seven one acres. And it's located on the east side of Freshwater Boulevard. Just south of the Stop and Shop shopping center that's located up at the corner of Hazard and Freshwater Boulevard. Across the street is the shop, right? Presently, there is an existing building on the site. That is Laird Plastics is the tenant in that building. They've been there for a couple of years now. The driveway to the property is a single driveway that comes out out at the Freshwater Boulevard here. These, site is zoned IP, which is that industrial park zone. Pretty much all the land south of Brookside Plaza and Stop and Shop. You know, all the way down to South Road was part of the old industrial park that was created back, I guess, in the eighties. So this parcel is zoned IP. The use that we're proposing is allowed in that zone. Last week, we did receive unanimous approval from the wetlands commission for the, for the project. And as stated in the record, the proposed building is this sort of purple color here. Would be a small building, five thousand forty square feet, one story building. There'll be a parking area for the, for the building of ten paved parking spaces with a ADA parking space located over here on the west side of the building. The tenant will be mobile mini solutions. These are folks that rent the, the steel boxes that you can rent. This sort of like the pod that you see rented mostly by residential folks. This is geared towards commercial renters that you see them a lot. I see them a lot on construction sites, contractors buy them to store. Or rent them rather at their store, you know, materials on the site. There are versions of them that you can get that have, say, half office, half storage. So you can have a small office at a location, but they're steel boxes. They're designed to be very secured on commercial properties. If you've had a chance at all to look, if you're familiar with them or had a chance to look online, they have a nice website and you can see they're starting to you know, spread out through Connecticut with locations to handle their, their leasing demands. Included with this application is a hundred and eleven thousand square feet of outdoor storage area, which is sort of this yellowish shaded area here. That will be where they store the boxes waiting to be leased and they also have some other equipment necessary to operate the facility. This is the layout plan that was included, the master plan. You can see again, this is the existing building and in the paved area, loading area, parking for that building will remain as is. The new building will be constructed towards the rear, the new parking area. These sort of checkered areas, these are large concrete pad areas where they can prep the units and get them loaded up on trucks to take them off to the sites where, where they'll be leased up, leased to. I listed here the proposed outdoor storage, the types of trucks, trailers and the rental units that would be, you know, stored in these areas here. This outdoor area will be all processed gravel. It will not be paved. So the only pavement that we're proposing is for the parking spaces and ADA spaces and then the, the two outdoor pad prep areas. And again, this is the actual layout plan. You can see we have a enclosed dumpster area and then all the layout and the dimensions. This, the entire outdoor storage area will be fenced in. And there will be lighting provided around the perimeter for security purposes. It'll be high tech LED lighting all aimed inward onto the site. And again, for security purposes. The coverage for the site. Right now, it's a twenty point two percent with just the single building will be going up to sixty two point seven percent. In the IP zone, you're allowed to go to sixty six percent coverage maximum. That, that includes the sixty two point seven percent includes accounting the outdoor storage area as an impervious surface, even though it's a gravel surface. Which will allow some drainage, but for those, for zoning purposes, we're counting the entire fenced in area as impervious coverage. So that gets us to sixty two point seven. As you can see, this is our landscaping plan. We're providing landscaping all around the paved parking areas, a little bit of buffer. Landscaping out in front to add some shielding from the, from Freshwater Boulevard. But in reality, with the remaining woods, treat area to the south of the existing building and then the entire site is covered by, you know, existing wooded areas. You really won't be able to see this site very well at all from, from the Freshwater Boulevard. And to the north of us is the rear loading areas of the shopping center. So there's really nothing to buffer there, but there is a nice vegetated area along the north boundary line that will remain in place. There's a drainage swale on there and that's going to remain in place. As far as drainage goes, there'll be a water quality basin constructed along the east side here. And that will handle the drainage from this property. The town engineers reviewed that and agrees with the calculations. As far as utility connections go for the building, we'll be installing new separate utility connections to the back of the building along the south side of the existing building. The existing building already has its own connections out to Freshwater Boulevard, but we're going to provide separate utility connections for this tenant. Plans include a erosion control plan that's required by the regulations and a separate utility plan. Looking at the proposed architecture, this was the floor plan. And basically this on the westerly side of the building, there'll be the entrance for the public up here at the north end of the building. And this is the service area for the public. The rest of this is office space for the staff operating the facility. And then there's a large indoor prep room for the containers and store, you know, for storage of equipment that doesn't want to be outside. Looking at the building itself will be a relatively simple building, a small building. There'll be masonry stone in this sort of tannish darker tannish color along the bottom for protection. The upper half will be colored steel panels, insulated steel panels in a lighter shade of that. And then trim panels for the sliding garage doors and the overhang area. This is the north air, north elevation. The south elevation. And then the elevation that the customers will see as they would, the parking would be here along the front of the building. Their main entrance would be here at the glass door for the northwest corner of the building and then some windows for the office and conference areas. You know, on that side of the building. So it's a relatively simple building, one story tall. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the commission might have.
Mr. Chair, I have one question in terms of, I'm looking at the regulations and in the regulations in section six point thirty point two point one. It says, and he is the limited outdoor storage. It says, you know, limited, you know, the outdoor storage shall not exceed twenty percent of the rear lot area. And I guess, I guess I have a real big problem with this particular proposal only because you know, it definitely violates that twenty percent rear lot area. And I'm not sure why we're looking at this when the, the, the regulation specifically say, you know, it shouldn't exceed more than twenty percent of the outdoor rear storage area.
Lori?
Actually, I'll take that one. So when we met with with the applicants prior to submitting an application, we did bring that up. The way that we were looking at that was sort of kind of similar to a car dealership.
But there's, there's no, it doesn't say if it's similar to a car dealership, you get to that relief. It just says it shall not exceed that that car dealership is something entirely different and we would look at it entirely different. This is specifically says shall not exceed twenty percent. Unless there's something specifically in the regulations that says we can exceed that, exceed that twenty percent. I'm not sure, you know, that we have any power to exceed that. There has to be something specific like that.
Lori, were you going to say something?
No, that wasn't me.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Zaiex again. We, we went over this with staff early on because I think the intent of, you know, I think that the, the word outdoor storage is, is it's a subject of interpretation. I mean, I think when they wrote that regulation, outdoor storage was meant to be things like, you know, material storage and things of that, that nature. But, but in this case, we're not, we're not storing anything here. We are, it, it's, you know, you could put a building here and, and put the, the, the product in. This is a leasing operation. These units, it's no different, it's no different than a rental car facility or, you know, what, what goes on, you know, in, in outdoor retail facilities. This, this is not a product storage area. I think you have to, it's a matter of subject of interpretation. And I think your zoning enforcement officer opined to us that he thought that, that, that was a reasonable interpretation.
But, but he's not part of the commission in terms of, I think that it's really the commission that makes that decision, not the zoning enforcement agency. I don't.
I'm not going to argue with, with you on that issue. I'm just saying that we discussed this with staff at length before we brought this application before you in detail. And, and the consensus was that this was not in the spirit of material outdoor storage. This is a retail facility.
It's still storage regardless of how you look at it in terms of.
Well, that's your interpretation, yes.
Well, I, I know that we, we've looked at a number of other applications that were industrial and, and we definitely held their feet to the fire. So it's one of those kinds of things where, you know, if there's, we, we have to be consistent in our interpretation, not necessarily say, well, it looks like a, a, a car parking lot and it's not. In terms of, you know, you're going to have stacking units thirty three high in terms of if the units are seven or eight feet high, they're going to be anywhere from twenty four to twenty one feet high. How are you going to screen that?
There's nothing to screen it from. You can't see the site.
It says it shall, I bet you I can see the site from the, from the road. You're saying, you know, it, it shall be screened. I, I, I think that, you know, there's, there's serious deficiencies in this application in terms of it doesn't meet our regulations. And, and, and I'm not sure that a six foot high fence is going to be able to screen whatever we're going to try to screen. It's, it's.
Commissioner, I would just, I would, I would just ask you to take a look at the aerial photo. We are a butter is the rear loading areas of a shopping center. To our, to our east, it is a wooded area that cannot be developed because of wetlands. To the south, it's a wooded area because of wetlands. It cannot be developed. And to the west, we are blocked by an existing industrial building. Nope, the public is not going to be able to see this facility.
Well, how wide, how wide is that building in terms of that, that front building? Is it?
It has a wooded area next to it, to the south of it. It's wooded. Look at the aerial photo.
No, I, I, again, it says specifically it shall be screened.
It's screened. I mean, let's look at the aerial photo.
So if someone, when the leaves are off the trees, I won't be able to see anything?
Well, I don't think we have to get to the point where we can't see anything. It's an, this is an industrial park. It's zoned industrial park. This is not.
There, there is a building between the street.
Retail area, developed retail area. If it was out in a boondock somewhere, maybe, you know, you might stand a chance, but this is, you know, right off the main drag. There's, there's millions of people that pass this way every single day.
This site, this site is an industrial park. It's can have an industrial use on it.
It could have.
You could put a factory on the site.
Of the rear yard area for storage.
Look, I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I've done debating this issue. I would ask the other commission members to please opine. Well, I, I think, I think part of the problem here is your demeanor is a little bit off with the commissioner. He's asking. I'm sorry, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. Do not interrupt me, okay? The two of you are interrupting each other. I'm sorry, sir. Asking, he's been asking very legitimate questions that are in our regulations. He hasn't said he made a decision either way. But he's trying to get clarification for himself, which I'm sure some of the other commissioners are listening to this conversation so they can also get clarification. He's not wrong about screening and I don't care if it's in the middle of the woods or not. It says screening. If it's in the middle of the boondocks, as you referred it, it still requires screening. So my question along with his would be the storage containers that are parked out there. Are they empty or do they have storage from a commercial site? Like Pods does. Pod stores them in a big open area and they're loaded full of stuff. Now, if you're empty and the units are empty, then I could see your point. It's a leasing facility. I would classify it more as like a car dealership. But if those units are brought to a site loaded and then brought back to your site and stored there, then I agree with him. So the clarification needs to be made here and we can't do it with the attitude going, you know, towards legitimate questions. We can't. And we got to stop interrupting each other. That's not how we're going to run the meeting. So if you'd like to answer those questions, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd like to start out by apologizing. I think we're, I'm a victim of the Zoom world here. I would never behave like that in, in, at your chambers. As you know, I've been before you many times and I'm not here to argue with any commissioner about their opinion in any way. I apologize. So toning it down in answer to your question, Mr. Chairman. These are empty facility, empty containers. They are to be delivered to your site. And then you can place inside them materials for, again, for construction, temporary storage of your buildings being renovated, things of that nature. That's really the business. They're brought back empty. They leave empty. There is no storage inside the containers on the property. Okay. Questioner Suzak, go ahead.
Again, I'm, I'm still reading our regulations and our regular, regulations state that, you know, any outdoor storage must be directly connected to activities inside the buildings. So I, I'm not sure what kind of activity is conducted inside the building that the, the storage is associated with. Because there's, it, it appears that it's not associated with any activities inside the building. And, and it's really just a storage area. So again, you know, I state my point, you know, I, I think that, you know, the regulations are, are abundantly clear as to what is allowed so that we don't have, you know, a, a sea of containers that it looks like a shipyard. And, 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 you know, I, I I object to the fact that, you know, we, we're trying to create a shipyard, you know, and, and call it a car dealership because they're entirely different. You know, a car dealership is, you know, the again, you, you have people that, that are actually looking through things in terms of you could probably get away with, you know, twenty percent of, of the storage area. If all you're going to be doing is bringing in boxes, you know, every time you get a call, just go out somewhere elsewhere you're storing it in, in a larger field and bring them into this, you know, why, why do we need to see all these containers? Then make it look like a shipyard in the center of our town. That doesn't make any sense. And I think that's what the regulations are trying to state is that, you know, you, you get some storage, but you don't get this big, huge accumulation of materials, you know, and, and that, that becomes unsightly.
Okay, Commissioner Alamo.
Thank you, Mr. Zaiex. So I have a question about the entry. Is that a shared common driveway? Is that a, a single parcel owned by the front? How, how is that working out there?
Yes, sir. The intent is to have the single driveway as you see it today. They're going to change the, the sign out at Freshwater Boulevard so that you can see both tenants.
And then there'll be, you know, you'll be able to drive past this existing area here, come to your parking area for, you know, if you're, if you're going to the mobile mini facility. And then there'll be a locked gate here. And then the outdoor area is completely fenced in. So the public.
Is the driveway controlled by one owner that's going to be responsible for snow removal and other maintenance?
Yes.
Or is that a split?
I don't know if it's split or not, but it will be one, it'll be one responsibility, yes, the owner.
Okay, and.
These will be two tenants, basically. These are two.
Right, two tenants, one property.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you. And so as far as inside the building, there was a question raised about relativity to the containers in the building, what are you doing in the building? So because we're kind of trying to make the correlation to a, you know, we're talking about a car dealership. So I think, and I don't know, but I think in the building that you would be working on the containers and fixing the tires and putting new desk in the office spaces and so on and so forth. So is that, that open building is to maintain what's out in the lot like a car dealership?
Yes, because you have these two large roll up doors that I have shown here on this floor plan.
Right.
And then this large area in here, so you can bring the containers in if they need to be repaired, you know, the, the doors on them, the locks on them, if they need to be washed and cleaned, it's done inside this building. There's a floor drain in this building. So none of the units will be cleaned outside. You can't do that in Connecticut anyhow. You can't wash down equipment outside. So that's the purpose of this building, this larger open area here is to inspect, maintain the boxes and clean them if necessary inside that building.
So it's kind of, so it's kind of makes it, you know, kind of relative to a car dealership, you know, because the building is being used for what's on the lot. And the other part of the trailers in the building, how elaborate are the trailers? And my, as far as the elaboracy, I'm just wondering, is there restrooms in the trailers? And is there waste that has to be removed when it comes back? And that, was it going to be tanks to store anything like that, human soiled waste and so on?
I, the vast majority of the units, as I understand, are for, you know, bulk storage on a property. I have seen some literature that some of the larger containers have a small office area. But I believe that none of them have bathroom facilities or anything. You would have to have, you know, they're designed for construction sites where you would have porta johnnies for the construction workers on the site, yeah.
Understood. Normally you would see that, but I didn't know how elaborate these were. I mean, they can get to be, you know, a portable little office with bathroom. I didn't know if it was, my concern is the restroom.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
You know, like a camper that needs to be, you know, gray water needs to be dumped out and so on and so forth.
Yeah, I have not, I have not seen any literature regarding that, you know, that, that level. It's the, when I say office, it's meant to be just a small weather tight kind of a.
And are you, you're stacking them? And so I just, I want to clarify something. You're going to stack them three high outside?
Only from my understanding, that would be just the option to do during the highest peak times. If there's, if there's a number of these boxes to be dealt with. But there are times when, you know, literally half the yard is empty. So there is some seasonal aspects to this as, you know, obviously when, in the summertime, when construction and things are at the highest point, there'd be a bigger demand for these boxes, but.
So what kind of equipment would, what kind of equipment would be some kind of crane equipment out there that we'd see?
No, no, it's just fork, it's forklift truck, forklift trucks and flat beds. If you look on sheet.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of hiding over there. It's on sheet MA1, sort of in the center there. These are the numbers they gave me, you know, four tractor trucks, three trailers, a service truck, some forklifts, and then the rental units. But you could see the range of rental units that they were talking about. I could blow this up a little bit.
There we go.
You go anywhere from 160 to 200 of these rental units, you know, depending upon the seasonal aspects of it.
And as far as screen, and as far as screening, could you add anything to the elevation or pitch from freshwater to that storage area? Does it slope down at all to increase screening or is that just relatively flat there?
It's, it's pretty flat. This whole, this whole area is pretty flat. I would, I think, you know, as far as down at the, at the grade level, the fence could be made opaque, you know, either by slotting it or switching it over to a solid fence along that westerly boundary line that would, that would obviously provide some additional screening for any visibility down at the ground level. And, you know, you could add, we could add some evergreen, additional evergreen trees planted along that, that there if there's any gaps. But again, I think.
Dave, can I add to the, just the quality of the containers and just kind of the general upkeep of them? And, you know, in respect to the chairman, the way that they, these containers, they're not necessarily what you would see like on a cargo ship, the rusted color, you know, cross, cross sea shipping containers. Actually, if you, now that you've heard the name, you might notice them as I have in the different, like they're behind Target, they're behind CVS, they're customers, so they store product in them as well. So they're nicely maintained, painted, you'll, you'll be, you'll see to recognize them now as you travel around. So they're not like an eyesore of a container like some people may think. And they're, they're well maintained, which is why they'll have the shop there. And the majority of that lot is covered by the building, which is between fresh, freshwater and the rare lot there. And as Dave said, if we had to add some evergreens or something like that, I mean, there would not be barely any, barely any visibility at all from freshwater, if any.
Okay, so I'm just wanting to just finish off with my comments. So I think I'm kind of, kind of leaning, leaning towards, it is similar use to the car dealership scenario, if you would. If you're, you know, if you're maintaining and rotating those, those trailers inside that garage for servicing and upkeep, bringing them back outside, getting them ready to be rented again or, you know, be delivered again, kind of mirrors that concept, I'm thinking. And if we can, you know, and you're saying you can do something with the fencing or the appearance, you know, maybe you can elaborate more on that. But thank you for the questions, Mr. Ziyak. I appreciate the answers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. Commissioner Grillo.
Yes, just to get back to what Commissioner Suzak was saying, I definitely understand what he's saying. And Commissioner Alimo, understanding what you're saying. But first of all, freshwater Boulevard is already higher than that land to begin with. If you've been by there, actually, I was just by there today. You can put up a 18 foot barrier across that. And just to clarify, you're not going to hide them containers. If I'm not mistaken, them containers are what, eight feet high, minimum, some are higher, but let's say eight feet. Sure?
Um, yes, you could walk inside them, yes, so.
Yeah, they're about eight feet high, none higher, but eight feet.
So if you just stack two, let's just say, okay, you're already 16 feet. You're seeing that from the road, no matter what. Right now, with the trees just bare as they are right now, you can see in there. So I'm not saying anything against it, but you can see in there. Where you're putting the building, it's not going to cover, you're still going to have room from the proposed building in the existing building. I looks to me quite a few footage where no barrier is going to stop you from seeing what you're putting out there for containers. So I just wanted to clarify that part of it. And Frank, as far as going, Commissioner Alimo, with car dealerships and stuff, think about it. Maximum height of a car is six feet. Let's get a box truck, eight feet, but you're not stacking trucks on top of each other. So you are going to see these containers. I want to clarify that no matter pretty much what you do, because already freshwater is higher, the road is higher than that. You can see over the existing building now. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. I just have a few questions along the lines of theirs. Doing work inside the building, I assume you're going to do some work on the trucks and forklifts also. Is there a oil separator going in the floor drain? Or are there floor drain?
Yes, if, right, if we look right on this sheet here, which is GR1, you can see right in front here, the south side of the building, there's an oil and grease separator there that we've worked out with WPCA.
Yep.
And that will go into the floor drains inside that, you know, open portion of the building and that will tie into the sanitary sewer.
Right, which would justify the work that is going on in the building. If I'm correct, your storage containers, they're white and blue?
I believe they are, yes. I've seen them around myself. They're, they're, all of a sudden I am seeing them everywhere. I believe they are.
Like a beige.
Yeah, they're paint, they're like a light, yeah, they're more like a beige color, not so much white. White is the, is the pods, pods, I think, is white and.
Red.
Red, yeah, but these are more beige, more, yeah, off white or beige.
Okay, are they metal?
Oh, yes, that's the, that's the attractiveness of this whole industry is that you can put these, you could put your merchandise inside these boxes, you know, at your location and they're extremely difficult to gain access to for security purposes.
So they're Connex boxes?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're heavy steel boxes with good, good, strong locks on them.
As Commissioner Suzak was alluding to, they're shipping containers more or less. How high is the building? I looked through the plans real quick just now and.
Yeah, the building is 22, well, call it 24 feet to the peak.
Okay, so 24 feet. So if you stack three of these containers and Commissioner Grillo is 100% correct, when you drive down that road, you look at the roof of Lard Plastics. So if you're stacking three containers, that's 24 feet if the road was level with the building. But being the road is elevated. I don't, I don't know how you would even shield that with your own building. Would you consider a maximum of double store, double stacking instead of triple?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll be honest with you, I, I'm not 100% sure. But if you folks were to make that as a condition of the approval in order to gain, you know, comfort level for the commission, then that's either something the applicant can live with or not.
Right, okay, I'm just trying to come up with a happy medium for everybody and.
Yes.
I do understand their concerns and the metal storage containers, they do get beat up a little bit and it will look like a shipyard to a point. I have to agree with him there. If they were the white and blue ones, they're, yes, they're a lot cheaper in the quality, but they do tend to look a little bit better. You never see a bad looking pod out on the road. That's all I have for now. Any other commissioners that would like to speak?
I have my hand up, Mr.
Frank, Commissioner Alimo.
Oops, sorry. Mr. Chairman, through you to the, to the staff, I'm not sure if this comes under our preview or it's even an appropriate question, or I don't even know if you know. In a storage area with the containers, I know car dealerships, there's a tax to those vehicles. Is there going to be a tax revenue like car dealers, personal property? Does anybody have that information?
That's irrelevant, Commissioner Alimo. We cannot get into finances on planning.
That's what I was asking, if we, if anybody, I know car dealers, there is a revenue source.
Yeah.
I'm just looking for the town coffers.
I understand, that's not our position though. Any other commissioners that would like to comment before Commissioner Suzak, go ahead.
Because I have another question in terms of, you know, I'm just looking at the layout and, and I noticed that, you know, your, your millings actually extend beyond, you know, the setback areas. And, and again, I have a problem with that only because of the fact that, you know, again, you know, I definitely see it as the regulations are perfectly clear that you should not have more than, you know, 20%, you know, I guess, coverage with storage area. But also that you're, you're actually exceeding, you know, your setback area. And I have a problem with that where, you know, it seems like, you know, you're pushing the envelope regardless of what we're allowing, you know. And normally the setbacks on these, you know, the industrial zones are only 25 feet, but your millings actually extend, you know, 15 feet into the 25 foot setback. I mean, that, that, that's just a blatant, you know, disregard for what the regulations say. And it seems to me it's consistent with this application.
Well, in answer to that question, I believe that the 25 yard setback is for buildings. You're allowed to park into that setback.
Not storage.
Well, you know, again, it's a matter of interpretation. I'm listening to what you're saying and I, and I hear what you're saying and, you know, staff has reviewed the plans and didn't, didn't point that out during the review. So I, all I can say is, you know, we're listening to what you're saying and I'll go by what the commission says.
Okay, you all set, Rich?
Yes, thank you.
Lori or Jen, how, how do we decipher a mini storage unit as far as lot coverage and stuff like that? Are there, because I know many storage units, one, are they allowed in this zone? And two, they also do outdoor storage, which is very limited on the particular ones that I've seen throughout town, or at least you can see from the road. So one, would a mini storage be allowed on this location?
So I, I tend to agree with the outdoor storage for materials and not so much the product. I mean, this is, these are the product itself. It's not, you know, the material storage of, you know, mulch and bricks and things of that nature. I leave, I did not do the review, so I'm, I'm just kind of thinking outside the box here. But I don't see why this would not be allowed in an industrial zone. We don't, we don't call out, we don't call out the units themselves, that's the thing.
Right, but my question.
Warehousing and distribution facilities. The other thing.
So the way we looked at it, when we reviewed it was sort of from, they were, it's the rental of these mobile mini units and the distribution of them. So we really looked at it from a distribution type point of view.
Right.
I mean, and we looked at the rear yard portion where they have the mini units as, again, you know, like an inventory holding area. They're, they're not storing things inside these storage units. But again, I mean, the commission interprets the regulations that we provided the staff review. If you do not agree, then it's up to the commissioners.
No, I understand, Jen, but I'm just trying to get clarification. Say Sunbelt Rentals wanted to come into the same spot. Would they be allowed to store all their equipment, which they do, outside on this particular property? Because that's how I classify this. I don't classify it as a car dealership or a storage unit. I could classify it more as a rental facility, which is like Sunbelt Rentals or, you know, all the big guys. I know the company that they're talking about, I know it well. And would we allow Sunbelt to be coming and going every day, all day long, with equipment that is stored outside in the industrial park?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with Sunbelt.
Anybody, Taylor Rental, you know, Taylor Rental on Route 5, they store a lot of their equipment behind the building, which you can't see. You know, every now and then you drive by, they have a few pieces out front that say rent me on them or something like that. So obviously they're allowed outside storage where they're located. I don't believe they're in an industrial zone.
I mean, to me, an industrial park is.
Go ahead, Lori.
For this type of use, where else would you possibly put something like this?
That's, I'm asking you what the, what the regulation says in regards to rental facilities.
It doesn't, it's, it's silent to it, to that.
It doesn't, okay, that, that's all I want, right, that's all.
That's why the staff, you know, staff has been trying to interpret this based on, you know, what is outdoor storage? What, what is this use and how do we fit it into any of the uses that are permitted in the industrial park? And I agree that this would sort of be a distribution facility because they are distributing these widgets or units. Widgets or units or containers to the outside and as a rental.
Right, right. Okay, Commissioner Suzak.
Because again, you know, again, if if Amazon came in here and and stored all their, you know, materials outside. The, you know, basically that's what we're saying, you know, everybody puts up a building and, you know, and they can they can put up a warehouse. That's what a warehouse is. A warehouse is for storing things, you know, and so that they're out of sight. So I would not have a problem if they wanted to put up a building and then had twenty percent storage out beyond that, you know, in their backyard. But to to say that I'm going to have one hundred percent of my inventory outside the building. Totally in in view of everybody is 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 like a shipyard in in terms of, you know, and. But n- normally you would expect that it would be a warehouse and then it there's the supplemental, you know, storage outside would complement that warehouse. But there's no warehouse here. And I guess that's my big problem is is that, you know, we're going to expose all of this thing. To view when in reality it could be inside a warehouse. There's nothing to prevent them from putting up a warehouse and storing them in in the building. So that they're not in in full view. And then they're out of view and 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 normally with a car dealership, a car dealership. You know, it has to have people looking at it and people come and look at it. That's why they're exposed into view. And 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 it's such a convoluted connection between a car dealership and this because the public ain't going to go out here and say. Oh, I want that red one with the pink stripes on it and the blue polka dots. But when you buy a car, you're definitely looking at at all the. Up upholstery and all the accessories and everything else. This this is not, has any not, nothing to do with what a car dealership is. Absolutely nothing. And and I don't get the correlation, but, you know, but like you said, it doesn't meet our regulations. If they want to put up a building and then have supplemental storage to it, I would be happy with that. But, you know, I don't see that, you know, people are going to be going out there and saying, I want that green one with the, you know, chrome wheels and. You know, the pi- pink stripes on it and and it has nothing to do with anything. But but that's me.
So Commissioner Suzak, I agree with, there is zero correlation with the car dealership. I absolutely agree with you on that. But there's also no retail allowed in an industrial zone. So people are not allowed to go to this site to say, I want to pick that container. They're going to get a phone call from me on a job site. They're going to bring it out. They're going to drop it off. They're going to come back. The storage of the containers costs them money to keep them there. Their goal is to have these containers out in the field. And keep them back. A- anything sitting in their yard, they don't make any money on it. So. I can't imagine them having five hundred containers sitting. You know, if you want to make a condition of approval that they can have so many containers, because I also am concerned about the height. I agree with you. There's no way to screen twenty-four feet high because those buildings sure as heck won't. So that's one of my reservations. But I do see it more as a rental facility. I see zero, um. To do with it as far as a car dealership, none. So, um, I agree with you on that. Go ahead, Commissioner Suzak.
Because the only other thing I could I could add is is that, you know, you were talking about, you know, the these pod storage, you know, facilities that you see for for people that store their units and and. And, you know, and and again, that's what I'm saying is that typically you would put up a building. And then you could have some supplemental storage where they store some RVs or 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 boats or, you know. Secondary, you know, larger items that don't fit in into the storage units. But but there is no reason why. You know, they can't put up a building that 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 does store their containers. There's there's absolutely no reason why. A- and and I think that's why our regu- that's what our regulations regulations are trying to say. You know, you you can only have so much outdoor storage and the rest of it has to go in a building. It it it's 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 mind-boggling that that people don't understand this concept.
I, okay, so how would you classify Martin Brower parking at the old Plaza Escavating? I see it as the same thing. They have thirty, forty trucks out there. I don't know how many trailers are sitting on that lot. Just stored there until they're used. It, to me, I see it that way, Rich.
But 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 a- as long as they conform to the fact that, you know, it's a parking area and and it's not storage. And and the thing is, if, you know, a- and I believe that Martin Brower, you know, they have, you you know, they've developed, you know, parking areas.
No, this is, this is at Plaza. This isn't at Martin Brower. This is right at Plaza Escavating. Where North Maple turns into Brainerd Road. It was, it used to be an excavating company. They moved next door. And now they have it, the parking lot is jammed full of storing the trucks there. Now trailers don't move every day. The tractors don't move every day. You know, it's the same thing. When they need the trailer, they take it. This company's going to do the same thing. When they need the container, they're going to take it. I'm just, what I'm trying to do, Rich, is, like Lori said, the regulation is very unclear about this, so. We need to decipher, first of all, where does this fall? In our interpretation of the regulation and and that's why I'm having the discussion with you. Because if it clears it up for both of us or we both have our own idea, at least we can mu- move forward that way. We both agree it's not a car dealership.
Right. And and the only thing I can say is I'm not familiar with with the facility that you're talking about. I I don't get to out to Brainerd Road that that often, that area, so. But but, you know, the thing is, you know, if it's, you know, a if it's a use that that has been approved. It might have been approved under a different zoning regulation because I because I think that, you know, that this regulation. Is is relatively new about the twenty, you know, percent rear stores, yard storage area. If they got, if they, if they're grandfathered, then it's allowed. But if they're not grandfathered, if it's a brand-new use, then they have to follow our regulations. And and I think we're we're we all agree to that where. You know, just because we changed our regulations, because, you know, we we ran in into all these people who are storing way more materials. Way more things outside than they should be, which is why we put it into regulations, because we want to control that. So it it doesn't get out of hand. And and it's it's not that, oh, look at the guy across the street. He's doing it and I can't because he might be grandfathered and you're not. And and that and that's the big difference that we're looking at. A- and 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 those car dealerships, they're they're grandfathered. A- and and they're, again, they're more, you know, public and and that's how they got into, you know, the industrial zone or the retail areas that they are. So, you know, so we can't really compare something that exists to something that's new because they might have been under a different regulation. But this is what our regu- regulations say today. It's not what they said fifty years ago. Is is what does it say today for what we're looking at today? Let's not compare it to somebody else because that that's not an even comparison.
Well, Martin Brower just started parking there in the last two years. So it is new and it is very equal. It may be a different zone. But what Mike, what I'm trying to get at, Rich, is to store your tractor-trailers. Forget Martin Brower. Tri-State Diesel. They have a truck that comes in with a blown motor. It sits on their property for two months. How is that different than this? They're storing the vehicle.
But but as long as they don't exceed twenty percent of their year 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 rare yard space, then it doesn't matter. This is one hundred percent. I mean, there's 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 no greenery. There's nothing there except storage containers. You know, if if it was forty percent or thirty-five percent, I would I would maybe start saying, well, maybe, but, you know, the the this. The regulations say twenty percent and and I didn't, again, if we want to change it, you know, we're we're reviewing our regulations now. But but we we can't just blatantly ignore what our regu- regulations say.
I thought it was sixty-five percent coverage.
Excuse me?
I thought it was sixty-five percent coverage.
Imperv- impervious coverage, but but the rear storage area has to only be twenty percent of the rear lot area. So so I I mean, we're talking about two different things. I mean, they have room to put up a building. And still be within that sixty-five percent, you know, impervious area area coverage. And and that's what I'm I'm advocating is that they have the 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 means and the methods to conform with our regulations. We don't necessarily have to bend our regulations for them or ignore what our regulations say. There there is a way to conform with our regulations. So why don't we make them conform with our regulations? Or, you know, rather than say, well, you know, our regular, I feel sorry for you, so, you know. I'm going to let you do this even though our regulations don't allow you to do it. That that doesn't make any sense. They they, there isn't a way for them to conform.
Dave, thank you, Commissioner Suzak. Commissioner Alamo.
Thank you, um, just wanted to make it clear to clarify, the only clarify, uh, uh, relative this I was making. With the used car dealership or the car dealership is that. The equipment rotates inside the building and back outside. I wasn't talking about. Somebody going to kick the tires and seeing what color it was. That was my only comparison is that. Those vehicles or those containers do go in the building and go back outside into the lot. And, um, I believe Lea Honda or one of the Leas stores a bunch of cars at the Anfield Square. They've been sitting there forever. Um, just just throwing that out there, too. Um, and I'd like to hear a little more discussion on, uh, just going too high opposed to going three high. Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners? Dave, would you like to add anything before I open this to the public?
I I was just thinking, Mr. Chairman, I think, um. You know, your analogy that you were talking about for, um, various rental facilities for equipment. Like, for instance, if we were looking at something like United Equipment, you know, where.
United Rentals, yeah.
Right, where they store outside, uh, all, basically all the equipment that they rent. It it really doesn't, uh, you know, it's not inside a building. And again, that's what we always thought here, that that th- this is really a retail facility. You come in here. Uh, either you do it online or you can you can physically come in. That's why we have parking. You come in and you make a reservation for, uh, these empty, uh, storage facilities to be delivered to your property. As a- a- that you lease for a period of time. And then when you're done, they're returned empty back out to the site and they're stored here for the purposes of. Hopefully not sitting here very long and going to the next destination. The reason, the only reason why we've established this thing is because, again, there is a seasonality. Uh, for this business because a lot of their business is related to construction. And, uh, and that's the reason for it. Again, uh, you know, uh. As far as the height goes, I would leave that to the commission under the special use permit to, uh, dictate whatever is satisfactory to you. Uh, this is our proposal as far as, uh, not being in the side yard. Again, I'd leave that interpretation up to the commission. The the regulations do not prohibit the use of of parking areas, uh, within the twenty-five-foot side yard that is intended for a building. But again, I leave that to your interpretation.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Uh, commissioners, before I open it to the public, anybody? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, um, I was looking through our regulations and at the footnote. Under six, Table Six Point Two, when you look at IP. It says, uses determined by the commission to be similar to and compatible with the uses listed for the IP district in Table Six Point. Or Six Thash Two may be permitted as a special permit used in the IP district. And then it goes on and says only parks and playgrounds are permitted. So if. I, there's, there's a couple sections that this might fall under. One might be the wholesale warehousing and distribution. The other one is, um, construction offices and facilities. And of course, there's absolutely no definition of that. So if the commission were to agree that this was a similar use to either of those. Um, that would be, um, one way to move forward. Um. Oh, that's about it right now.
Can you do me a favor, Lori, real quick? Look up Taylor Rental and see what the zone is that that current facility is in.
I will try.
Okay, um, at this point, seeing no other commissioners' comments, I'd like to open up public hearing twenty-nine eighty-eight to the public. Anyone out there wishing to speak in favor or against this application, please speak up. Going for the second time, public hearing twenty-nine eighty-eight, special permit for a mobile mini storage facility. On Freshwater Boulevard, going for the second time. And going for the third time. Okay, seeing done. Back to the commission.
Do any of the other commissioners have a feeling one way or the other on this?
Well, I think I I think it's clarification of where we allowed. A rental facility because that's what this is. Clear as can be. This is a Taylor. Uh, rental, this is Sunbelt Rental, United Rentals, they all do it. Everything is stored outside. But right now in Anfield, we do have Taylor Rental. And, um. You know, I don't I don't know that I would necessarily agree with this being retail. Because, you know, not many people pull in and say, hey, let's go rent a container. They're, it's all going to be done by phone or internet. Um, and also retail is not allowed in the industrial area. No luck, Lori. Commissioner DeGray.
I I.
I'm working on it.
Thank you, but I guess I'm kind of. Need a little bit more clarification on where this. Type of business falls because I'm sitting here flipping through our regulations and trying to figure out. How to classify this, but we have nothing. So.
I I agree with you.
I I. I understand that there's type of business, there, uh. Warehouse type of business. They have product that is larger than, uh. A watch, so you can't leave it inside because it's too large. I understand there's this con- continuum in and out with it and there's season that they'll be fewer. But I don't know how to classify it. And then I think we need clarification from our staff on how they would classify it. For the industrial park.
Mr. Chairman, Taylor Rental is in the BL Zone.
Business local, yeah. Okay, um, you know, I have another scenario right down the road from this facility that's pretty equal would be a towing facility. They tow cars in and out all day long. The cars are stored in the impound for months at a time. Um, yes, they are screened one hundred percent. I agree with Commissioner Suzak about that. Um, I I guess I'm just trying to, you know, it's hard to interpretate the regulation when there's nothing in the regulation about this, so. You know, you could go any direction as far as you want on this and, you know, so that's where I understand Commissioner Suzak's. Go ahead, Rich.
Because the only thing I might add is is that, you know, if if it's, if it's specifically not. Indicated as being allowed, then it's really not allowed, you know. I I think that's what the regulations are are, you know, in indicate. So that, you know, if you specifically allow something, then then, you know, then you you've already dictated that this is what what could happen here. And and like you said, you know, because of the fact that, you know, our our forefathers and the people who who wrote these regulations encountered. You know, this this type of scenario and and that's why it it's in the regulations the way it is. And 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 I I, you know, I keep saying that because, you know, I I understand what what we want to work with businesses and I understand that we want everybody. To, you know, make a living and 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 improve our town and get revenue in our town. But 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 I find it hard for us to, you know, violate the regulations for one person, but. But, you know, but hold somebody else's feet to the fire and 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 I know that, you know, there, we recently had something on Anfield Street where. You know, we we definitely, you know. You know, had, you know, their feet to the fire and we made them do all kinds of things. Just to the fact that, you know, it said twenty percent and twenty percent is twenty percent. It it doesn't mean the whole thing and and it's not a matter of interpretation. If it, it's either allowed or it's not allowed. If it's if if it's not allowed, if it's not specifically allowed, then it's not allowed. So. You know, I I think that, you know, we're we're trying to bend over backwards, but but we're also. The destroying the integrity of the commission by, you know, trying to to find a way to 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 make something work that doesn't work. And and that that's all I have to say.
Okay, well. Again, I agree with some of what you're saying. Again, I agree with some of what you're saying and I disagree with others, you know, just because it's not clarified, uh, rental facility. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist because they exist all over the entire planet. Um, as far as, you know, in the setbacks, yes, parking may be allowed, but this is not parking, this is storage. Which is totally different. So, a- a- again, I, I mean, I could go either way on this. Um, I'm not into allowing storage in the setbacks. As far as the um. Rental facility, I think it is going to be up to the commissioners to make their own choice. Because there is no regulation for me to even say it's vague. Or if the commission chooses, we could, you know, um, get a town attorney's opinion. I don't even know if that's legal to do. Because we're not supposed to discuss anything that's on our agenda. Um, before proceeding to move forward, but for me to move forward on this tonight. One of my conditions would be no more than two stacked high. And there is no storage within the setbacks of the property. So those would be two conditions, the only way I would consider even thinking about moving forward with this tonight. So I'd like to hear from the other commissioners and then we will open it back up to the public if that's how you choose to proceed.
Mister Chairman, may I, may I offer something for you? I would say on behalf of the uh. Applicant, hearing what the commission members have said. Uh, we would modify the application to be two units high. Pull back out of the side yard and uh, make the fence opaque to Freshwater Boulevard. And add a row of evergreen trees that will grow up a sufficient height uh, along that boundary. Uh, this way here, the commission doesn't have to burden itself with trying to write uh, conditions of approval. We would accept that as part of the application.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioners, Commissioner Alamo.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yes, I, I could support this um, along the lines of, of what you were just had mentioned. Uh, the, no more than two high for sure. Um. And I, I think it's a perfect fit for the industrial park. I mean, where, where else are you going to put this thing? And for me, the industrial park's empty enough for the last thirty-five years. And um, I, I think it's a great fit for that area. I don't think we, I don't think we can go anywhere else with it. So I, I could support it with those conditions.
Other commissioners, Commissioner DeGray.
I can support um, this with those added conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner DeGray. Ginny? Did we lose Ginny Higley?
She's muted.
I'm sorry, I keep getting muted and I apologize for the phone, it won't turn off. Um, I just wanted to say I agree with Rich Suzak and with part of what you said, Ken. You need to adhere to the regulations. While it says that the commission may modify conditions, there's nothing in the regs now. If somebody wants to rewrite the regs so that they can be there, that's one thing, but right now. If I were going to approve it, I'd want to see a bigger building with some of the units inside and um. You know, at least looking at it for how much coverage is in the backyard. So as it stands now, I would not be able to support this.
Thank you, Ginny. Commissioner Lad. Unmute yourself, Charlie.
There we go, got that? Can you hear it now? Okay. Uh, I tend to agree with you, Ken, about the fact that it is a rental business. And uh. With those conditions, it'd be a good a place as any to put it. But again, not in the setbacks and the height. And with the conditions that Mrs. Ziyak offered on the, on the north side, that would uh, make it more palatable.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Grillo.
Yes, sir. I, I also would like to say that I would, uh, with the conditions that he just said, because that was exactly. What I was going to ask for, um, I would definitely consider it to, uh. As long as the bushes, they understand that you can see it and they stay within the two height, I think the building and the tree would be put in the. Uh, the trees that they grow over a foot, uh, a, a year, I think he'll be able to get the coverage. Uh, and they stays in his setbacks. Um, I understand cut back on some containers, but uh. I would go with that myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Grillo. Anyone else before I open it to the public? Okay, seeing none. Um, is there anybody out there who would like to speak in favor or against? Public hearing twenty-nine eighty-eight for a mobile mini storage unit um, for containers. In the industrial park. Anyone going for the first time? Going for the second time, for or against? Comments, questions, concerns? And going for the third time. Okay, seeing none. How would the commission like to proceed?
Again, I would like to make, you know, one, one more statement, you know, prior to closing in terms of. You know, I, I think that, you know, we, we definitely have to, to look at the regulations and what the regulations allow, you know, I, like you said, I, I think that. We're, we're, we're grasping at straws to, to work with somebody when there, there are other options that are available. And I, and I think that, you know, what we don't want to do is start opening Pandora's Box with, you know. This wishful thinking that, oh, you know, we're, we're making friends and we're, we're bringing in businesses and in reality. What's going to happen is that we're going to bring in the wrong kinds of businesses and we're not, and, and we're gonna. We're gonna disillusioned the previous people who have come before us where we adhered to the, to the regulations. And, and that, you know, what we have to do is make sure that, you know, we are consistent with interpreting the regulations. Rather than saying, being this laissez faire, oh, you know, it might, you give, if you stretch the imagination, it'll look like this. Or if you look at it like this, I, I, I think that there are areas or there are ways that they could satisfy our regulations. How, you know, us having to cover, you know, our, ourselves. And, you know, like you said, I, I just hope that you all realize what you're doing. And the fact that there will be ramifications further on when we start making these kind of decisions that go against our regulations. And we don't have anything concrete to base our decisions on. So with that said, you know, vote the way you want. But remember, we, we, we are obligated to vote what our regulations say, not necessarily what, what we would like to see. Or what our personal opinions are. It's what the regulations say, not a personal opinion, because everybody, again, you know. You look at the mess that we have going on in the United States, because every, nobody wants to, to, to. Conform to regulations, everybody wants their own way, so. With that said, I think that we, we definitely should think twice before, you know, we vote today.
Mister Chairman, move to close the public hearing.
No, I gotta open it back to the public. Please withdraw your motion.
So move this withdrawn, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners comments before I open it back to the public? Seeing none. At this time, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor or against twenty-nine eighty-eight? Um, for the mobile mini storage facility on Freshwater Boulevard? Going for the first time? Going for the second time? And going for the third time? Seeing none, now I'll accept your motion, Commissioner Alamo.
Make a motion, Mister Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's main, seconded by Commissioner Lad. All in favor by roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
For.
Linda DeGray.
For.
Charles Land.
For.
Virginia Higley.
Against.
Frank, Frank Alamo.
For.
John Petronella.
I'm an alternate on this, Rich.
Yeah, we're, we're just voting on whether to close the hearing.
No, he's, he's not sitting, he's not a sitting member.
Oh, I thought we were voting on the actual. No, never mind.
To close the public hearing.
Oh, can I withdraw my against and say for?
Sure.
Thank you.
Ginny Grillo.
For.
All in favor, okay, how do you want to proceed?
Proceed to vote?
Yep, go ahead, Rich, read the. Motion, please.
Motion that we approve the draft resolution for public hearing twenty-nine eighty-eight. Um, as prepared by the planning department with. Currently, there are twenty-six conditions and one site specific condition that the, the re. The comments of the building department, engineering department, or water pollution control authority must be addressed. And I believe that there's a series of additional conditions that. If we choose to go down this way, that the, the, the maximum height of any storage containers will be two, one on top of each other. There will be no storage of units within any of the, the side or rear yard areas.
Even front, Rich.
And even front, well, I think.
No setbacks.
Right, all the setbacks and, and I, I believe that, you know, it, it was indicated that an opaque. Um, screening would be put on the fence, but the fence is only going to be, it's been high, so that's. And that they were gonna throw some evergreens in front of the building.
Yes, and I would, the evergreens have to at least be started at, say, ten feet tall. Ten feet or taller, what they can get.
Minimum height of the evergreens would be ten feet.
Yep, to start.
Correct.
Okay, motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and seconded, roll call, please.
Can I start with myself?
No.
Ken Nelson.
For.
Linda DeGray.
For.
Charles Land.
For.
Virginia Higley.
Against.
Frank Alamo.
For.
John, oh, um, Vinnie Grillo.
For.
And Richard Suzak is definitely against.
Okay, there's five in favor, one against, the motion passes.
Two against.
Two against, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, two against. Uh, the motion passes. Uh, congratulations and you hear the concerns of the entire commission, so the best you can do to screen the property would be greatly appreciated. And good luck, welcome to Enfield.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Again, this is Dave Ziyaks and uh, I apologize for uh, my rudeness at the beginning of the hearing.
No problem, have a great night.
Thank you, good luck.
Moving on, public hearing twenty-nine seventy-three fifty-five Cottage Road, I believe I read something where he's withdrawing the application.
Yep. Yes. You should have received the uh, withdrawal form um, in your email and I put it online.
Do we need to open it? Do we need to open it to accept the resignation or the withdraw?
Uh, no, just um, just a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
And we have that in writing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll accept the motion.
I did see, I did see it in my email.
Public hearing twenty-nine seventy-three withdrawal without prejudice?
Motion's made, is there a second? And it's seconded by Commissioner DeGray. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Seeing done, motion passes. Old business, is there any old business this evening?
No old business.
Seeing done. Site plan review, SPR eighteen forty-two. Rich?
It's a, it's a site plan review and there's, there's no.
Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mister Chairman. Again, Dave Ziyaks from FA Husker Associates, uh, representing AAA. And uh, I believe that Ken Chapman may be, again, uh, out in the virtual world there, uh, representing AAA as well. Um, if I can share uh, once again here. You can call up the plans. This is the site uh, Enfield Commons. Uh, a year ago, the commission um, approved um, this facility. Um, it, I'm gonna call up the uh, the big overs- oversized site plan of Enfield Commons. And um, on the uh. You could see the, the main building, we're all familiar with uh, Enfield Commons, we have uh, down along the uh. Hazard Avenue, we have Chick-fil-A, and if you recall back a few months ago, you folks approved. You, you, you folks approved uh, where the new Starbucks is going to go, location there, that, that construction's actually going to start next month. Uh, Olive Garden.
Do read it.
Yeah, and then um, over here on the uh, east side where the very large parking lot has been located for many years. Uh, is where the AAA was approved last year.
Yeah, okay.
And um. Uh, what's happened is, as the months have passed by, uh, they had site construction costs came in. Overall construction cost for the project and it just deemed to be too expensive to proceed with the design that they had before. Uh, there was a very complicated and expensive approach to the flood compensation necessary. Uh, there were concerns after looking at it again about the way that the project was approved, the building was rotated ninety degrees. So that it faced um, Freshwater Boulevards. And in doing that, you ended up with a driveway, or the main driveway to that new facility was going to be located very close to this intersection here, and I know. And looking at the minutes of the meeting last, that that was a concern of the commission. And uh, you know, they approved the project the way it was, but there was a, a number of issues expressed by the members of the commission at the time. So in look, in taking a fresh look at this, they asked us to take a look at it when we were working at the, on the Starbucks portion of the site. And see if we could come up with um, some ideas to uh, improve upon the plan that was, that was approved by the commission. And, and get the budget back into uh, an area that uh, you know, was acceptable to move forward. And at the same time, if you recall, uh, the old Bob's uh, was uh, re-tended it with uh. Home Sense, which is similar to Home Goods owned by the same company. And the Alton uh, cosmetics filled in that area. And uh, what's happened is uh. Even more so than Bob's, a lot of the customers, particularly from Home Sense, are parking now over in this easterly parking area. And we all know that that uh, access driveway that's right up against the building, that location. Um, actually is a blind spot, you know, you could argue that it's a fairly dangerous situation over there and it's existed for many years. So as part of this revised site plan, uh, we're, we're looking at moving that driveway over further to the east. And introducing a few parking spaces for customers there and completely redoing the pedestrian access area there, gain access to the parking. And at the same time, we need to address concerns of the fire marshal about gaining access to the back corner of this, of this building. Because that's where the fire room is, the control room. And that's why the parking stops halfway down the building and that area would be all striped out as a, a fire lane. So that's been added since you last saw uh, this um, site plan. Uh, the access driveway, the building be rotated ninety degrees and the access driveway is now moved much further away from. Uh, the traffic signal on Freshwater and uh, is in a nice, safe location uh, as shown in the plans here. Let's see if I move over to my slideshow so we can see these full size here. This is the uh, blow up of the layout plan at your normal twenty scale. And um, you can see the building, uh, it will be, it will face towards the uh, the main driveway that comes in off of Freshwater. Again, that main driveway uh, into the facility will be located a couple hundred feet further into the site. Uh, one of the other improvements that we have is uh, we're going to take out this strange hump that's in the driveway. It comes in from Freshwater and smooth it out so that it directs the traffic down to the um. That intersection we were talking about next to Home Sense. And a stop, a full stop location here, and you can see we're cleaning up the pedestrian access at this point, establishing. You know, bona fide crosswalks with ramps. and a sidewalk into this easterly parking area. Now, in order to deal with the, uh, floodplain compensation, what we're actually doing is we're going back to an approach that was approved back in the 1990s. I've actually been working on this site since 1987. It's hard to believe. But, uh, I was involved with the original conversion of this. This was an indoor mall in its original days, and it was converted to an outdoor shopping area in the late 1980s. But, um, as part of, uh, uh, back in the early 1990s, there was an addition proposed, uh, on Bob's, and that required floodplain compensation. And what we proposed to do is create a flood compensation area, uh, along the northerly boundary of, of the parking area. And that's sort of what we're going back to. We're going to take out 100 paved parking spaces. And which will create about a, over 30,000 square foot conservation area here. There'll be a next, a small, an excavated area in here that will work as part of our overall flood compensation, uh, to deal with the building. And, uh, that will remove 30,000 or squ- thousand or, uh, square feet or so of impervious coverage off the site, which it could desperately use. And, uh, result in no net loss in the flood storage, uh, for the total site. Uh, the parking still meets the overall requirements for the shopping center. Uh, the parking, uh, is still overparked. Um, even with the addition of the out parcels, it's still overparked. And most of the extra parking is, you know, uh, wraps around the, uh, the backside of the shopping center and comes over here to this easterly side. So, uh, even with the removal of the 100 parking spaces, we still meet the, uh, the zoning regulations. Looking at the, um, the rest of the, uh, the plans that are before you, this is a sort of a, uh, rendered version of what the site plan will look like. So when you come in, again, they, uh, there'll be a, an extension of the public sidewalk onto the site. The driveway will be closed at that location. It'll move down to, further to the west. Uh, we'll put in new landscaping along the, the slightly realigned driveway. We'll put some new trees, uh, along that driveway. Introducing some landscaping next to Home Sense over here. And then, of course, the new building will be fully landscaped, you know, in accordance with the regs around the building. And then we're creating this, a large, uh, 30,000 plus area, uh, for flood storage. And, uh, water quality basin. Uh, that was something that was, uh, very well received by the wetlands commission. Obviously, uh, anytime we add this much, uh, green space along the freshwater, uh, Brook corridor, uh, that's a positive step in the right direction. The utility connections will be pretty much as was approved before. There'll be water sewer extended to the site. And then the site lighting in, uh, in this portion of the site will be completely redone to new LED lighting. Um, and the Cobra heads, uh, that exist out there now will be removed and replaced, um, as part of the, uh, application. So basically, um, the size, the use, uh, and everything is, is as was approved prior. Uh, again, that's the formal landscaping plan there. If you had a chance to review the drawings, you saw the planting schedule. It's a pretty extensive amount of landscaping. It will completely change the character of the entrance from freshwater Boulevard into the center. As we all know, there's almost no landscaping whatsoever in that parking lot right now. It's always been the sore point of the shopping center. So this will completely change the look of the entrance from this, uh, from freshwater. And then if we move on, uh, that was the grading plan, the utility plan. If you had a chance to look at that, might have some questions regarding that. And then, uh, if we look at the architecture, this was the floor plans essentially the same. Uh, this is actually unfortunately flipped because the front entrance is up on this site here. So this is the south door. The customers will enter into the showroom area. There'll be waiting spaces and things of that nature there. Uh, the back house, uh, for the facility is located there. And then over on the east side is where the actual, uh, facility is for the repair of the vehicles that we brought in. Uh, and all the repairs will be done inside. Uh, this was the architecture. Again, I think it's the same or very similar to what you folks approved before. Looking at the main driveway coming into freshwater, this is what you'll see. Uh, this is the main entrance over here on the left-hand side for the customers. It's all glass in the front. And then the, uh, doors to the tire and auto facility located on the easterly side. Looking at it from freshwater, uh, Brook, uh, this would be the backside, uh, of the building, um, and the, uh, again, the auto center, and then the two sides of the building. So you can see there's a nice, it's a nice contemporary look, very consistent with, um, the new Starbucks building that was approved. And, uh, this is the way the architecture is heading, uh, as you can see, new, more and more new projects in town. This is a nice, clean, contemporary look with, you know, lots of different kinds of materials, awnings, things of that nature to give it a nice, modern day look. And, um, so then we looked at the, uh, the town staff has prepared a report for you, very thorough. As far as staff comments go, outstanding staff comments. The only one I saw was like, there's a, a note that, um, the lighting plants show some light bleeding out onto the street over on the east side. But, uh, the computer model that they use to model the, uh, foot candles really doesn't take into account the extensive, uh, landscaping that's, uh, trees that are along freshwater Boulevard that we planted 30 years ago. All of those trees, long freshwater Boulevard are gonna stay. So, uh, that, that adds some buffering. And again, the foot candles is something in the order of like point one to point four foot candles, which is, you know, essentially washed out by the lighting that's on freshwater Boulevard, which again is not, you know, in the, in the computer model. So I, I think it meets the intent of the regulations, which is basically no spillage over to abutting properties for, you know, from practical purposes. During the meeting view, uh, that's where we talked about the, um, the new driveway along Home Sense. We made some modifications based on staff comments and from the fire marshal. Originally, we had parking along the entire side of, um, you know, uh, that, that east side of the existing shopping center. And at the request of the fire marshal, uh, we sort of split the difference, um, and satisfied his concerns. His main concern was the access, again, here, uh, in this northeast corner of the building. And so that'll be all striped out and signed as a, uh, fire lane. And we reduced the amount of parking located here. And then there was one other comment from engineering. They were concerned about us taking out this little, uh, curve in the road on this side, on the south side, not on the north side, but on the south side, because tractor trailers making a swinging turn to leave to go out to freshwater Boulevard, uh, could use that extra space so that there's no chance they would hit, uh, you know, the curbs on, along the driveway. So we're gonna leave that, and I'm just painting a white striped line across there just to, you know, to really kind of, uh, keep, keep every, keep the cars, you know, lined up in the appropriate, uh, area. So that was another change we made based on staff comments. But other than that, there are no other outstanding, uh, staff comments of any concern, and they're rolled into your staff's, um, recommendations, um, for approval. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioners? Commissioner DeGray?
Um, I did have read, um, Jen's last email from the health department about the sewage backups that are happening periodically over in that mall. Could you help me and tell me how that's gonna be addressed?
Um, I'd be honest with you, that's the first I've heard of that. Uh, it wouldn't surprise me in the old sections of the building. Uh, you know, the original shopping center, that there may be some issues with old plumbing in those buildings. But as far as the main line going out to the street, WPCA didn't have any concerns. And to be honest with you, the flow from this new building is gonna be very small, you know, bathrooms for customers and then the employees and, so it, you know, as far as adding any additional burden, it's gonna be extremely small. But I, I, I'm, that, that comment will, will be brought back to the owners and we'll find out, uh, maybe talk to the health district a little bit more exactly where they're, they're talking about. But I'm, it wouldn't, again, I, I, to be honest with you, it wouldn't surprise me that there are some issues with, uh, sewer lines in the old portion of the building. Some of these, some of those sewers probably date back, uh, you know, 35, maybe 40 years ago, when the center was originally constructed. And I'm sure that's what they're talking about. There certainly doesn't affect any of the newer construction.
All set, Linda?
Yes, thank you. I was muted, sorry.
Any other commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hegley.
I just had a couple of observations. Where Home Sense is on the end of the building, where they're gonna put the parking spaces. I know that there's a little white tent over there, but Home Sense loads their customers' purchases right in that spot where the parking spaces are gonna go. So I don't know if that'll have any, anything to do with anything, but I'm just bringing it up now while I think of it. And the other thing I thought of was where Ocean State is in the front. I think it was you, Ken. Somebody brought up last time somebody was here about, uh, no parking in the front. And I was over there the other day, and there's still parking in the front. So those are my two observations. I think the plan is great, and I think it's a big improvement.
Thank you, Commissioner Hegley. Any other commissioners? Commissioner, I'm sorry, Jen, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, in response, Jenny, I believe the fire marshal is, um, or has worked with the owners of the plaza to, um, come to some sort of, uh, compromise or, or consensus on parking, um, in the fire lanes near Ocean State Job Lot. Um, but I don't know exactly, uh, where they are at with that, but I know that they are, um, at least talking. Um, I also did receive, um, comments from the fire marshal today, and I apologize, I should have forwarded them along with the health department. But they said, uh, and I'm reading from my email. Currently, the only question I have outstanding is the location of the dumpster and associated enclosure location. The applicant was going to send the location along with a PDF plan sheet. However, as of today, I have not received it. So long as the application does not interfere with required access or distances, the fire department has no issues regarding this application.
All set, Jen?
Yep, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Charlie? You're muted. I can't see, because he's got his screen up. I don't hear, so.
Then keeps jumping into mute. We, uh, I said, I think it's a good improvement. They obviously listened to what we were saying. And, uh, I know you were concerned about the flooding in that lot, as I am. But it looks like they're working in the right direction with that field right there.
Yeah.
Control that flooding. And I think the smaller building are actually be more functional, so that, that'll be good.
All set, Charlie?
I think so. I think they did a good job.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Seeing done. Lawyer Jen, do you happen to have the, uh, added conditions of approval we placed on this building when it first came to us? I know a couple of them were no outside storage of cars or trucks.
Uh, let me pull that up.
And how would the commission feel if we went on that back grassy area and maybe substituted some of the plantings that they have now for weeping willow trees? Because I believe those are the trees that suck up the most water. It may help a little bit more.
Well, you know what, Mr. Chairman, what we can do is, uh, right now, we have some deciduous and some evergreens around the perimeter. We could certainly switch those to willow trees.
Yeah, well, I, right, I just, I'd rather have it more so in the back because the, where the stream is, it's pretty wooded, and weeping willows are not a good screeding tree, but they definitely are a good water tree.
Yeah. Yeah, we can come up with something for that.
Yeah. I mean, if the commissioner, uh, commission's okay with that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Chairman, uh, would you like to know what the site-specific conditions are?
Yes.
Um, I can share my screen where I can read them.
Go ahead, share your screen.
Oh, I need, uh.
Does Dave has to take us down, or get you over?
Yeah. Uh, Dave.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, let me pull out a stop share. There we go.
So the first one was that the parking table must be updated. Um, I don't think that applies in this situation. Uh, the second one was the connection to the compensatory storage system must be shown. Um, again, I don't think that is relevant to this application. Um, the east entrance is to be revised to reflect one way.
That's all changed.
Yeah, it's all changed, so. Fire lanes, signage. Um, but there is that, there is no, um, to be no outside storage or towing of vehicles left outside.
Okay. Water pollution, oil water separator. Okay, and this particular plan here, what is the net gain or loss with the floodplain as far as storage?
It's actually, we gain a, a small amount. It's in the calculations, Mr. Chairman. I forget the exact number.
Right, but the last plan was, uh, net zero, right?
I believe they zeroed it out. Yes, we're a little bit ahead.
All right, so. Again, I still have my huge reservations. Two weeks after this was a play, uh, approved by the commission, that parking lot was underwater. Uh, probably two feet of it. And you know, I talked to several commissioners and said, I told you so. And I think it's gonna continue to be a problem there. But those are my only concerns, and as long as that the outside storage of vehicles is prohibited at all times. And then we add in the, uh, location and screening of the dumpster pad site. That's all I have. Any other commissioners? Jen, can I get you to take that down?
Yep.
I apologize. I just can't see the commissioners if they raise their hand. Commissioner Alamo?
Yeah, um, question, uh, for Dave. The customer area, are they essentially gonna be moving everything over from their current location for those services that, uh, our community gets to use such as, uh, the driver's license renewals and, um, so on and so forth, the little store they have there? Is that going over there as well?
I, I believe so, because they're closing the other app, the other location. So yes.
Okay, good, because I, I think they provide a, uh.
They have trap, yeah, they have travel. I use it, I use it all the time myself. I'm a AAA member, so.
And, and I am as well, and it comes in handy for the driver's licenses and other things. So.
Right.
The community will still have, uh, those, uh, resources there for them.
I, 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 yes, I, I'm sure of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners with COVID's questions or concerns? Okay, how would you like to proceed?
Close the public hearing?
No, it's a special permit.
Oh, okay. Oh, site plan review. I apologize.
I'm sorry, site plan review. Rich, you're muted.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, site plan review 1842. With the, well, currently there are 27 site-specific conditions. I mean, we're gonna add at least two more. And one of the two is that there shall be no outside storage or towing of vehicles, and no vehicles shall be left outside. And that the dumpster, um, pad and, and screening be. And that the dumpster pad and screening be indicated under plans.
What about the weeping willow trees, Rich?
And modification of weeping willow trees in lieu of some additional plantings along the rear north side of the site. And, and that's dated, I guess, November twelfth.
Okay, motion's made. Is there a second? Motion's made, seconded by Commissioner Lad. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
As I said before, I'm very concerned about the flooding situation over there, so again, I am against this application.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Charles Lad.
Four.
Virginia Hagley.
Four.
Francis Alimo.
Four.
Vinnie Grillo.
Four.
And Richard Suzak is four.
Okay, six in favor, one against. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and when do you, when do you guys think you're gonna break ground?
Well, it's under bidding right now. So, yeah, they're a year behind schedule.
Yeah, so is everybody. Well, congratulations.
And the Starbucks is starting, I think they're in for a building permit right now, so that's gonna start to.
Did they demo yet, Dave? Are they demoing?
No, that's, that's part of the permit. Yeah, so I think it's gonna be a very, well, they're gonna work as well as they can through the winter, and it's gonna be a very busy spring out there.
Good, good, good. All right, thanks, Dave.
Thank you, and good night. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Moving on, flood permits, FLD number forty-two.
Oh, once again, this is AAA. Oh, I guess Dave left. So, but it's the same application, just the approval of the flood portion of the permit. Again, they're taking up that part of the pavement for flood compensation instead of connecting to the compensatory storage and expanding it on-site along Hazard Avenue. And there, again, they have their making, or they're, they're going beyond what they need to do to compensate for flood storage. Instead of zeroing it out.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
I'm sorry, did I leave too early? I just realized. It's sort of.
So, Jen, they're making this improved, an improvement since the initial application on the floodwater.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, what we're doing is we're removing, as part of the previous application, there was this sort of an expansion of the underground system that was put in for Chick-fil-A. And it, it was a complicated piping system that was going to be put in, in the parking lot to the west of Chick-fil-A. And it's an expensive system. It was gonna be a lot of disruption to the parking lot over there. And I know DOT wasn't too excited about it, because it involved work in the right-of-way for Hazard Avenue and such, so you add it all up. It was a sort of a complicated process. So that's why we went, or we went back to my old design from the nineteen nineties. And it eliminates the need to put that piping system up near Chick-fil-A. And that's basically the difference, but the net result is there's zero impact on the flood storage capacity of, of the property. So, you know, it's been reviewed by your engineering department, and they seem to agree with us. That's the difference.
Commissioners? Again, I have the same concerns. There's zero impact, there's zero gain. Yes, there's no loss to it either. But it is zero gain. You see the parking lots underwater. That water's gotta go somewhere. So, again, I have my concerns with this. How do you guys want to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for flood permit, FLD number forty-two, because it was indicated or shown that there is not gonna be a significant impact on the associated that is gonna be greater than what exists right, for lack of a better word.
Thanks, Rich. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Abstentions? Six in favor, one against. Congratulations, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I could, I think I could leave safely now. I've, I've used up enough of your time tonight, so I'm gonna.
Have a great night.
All righty, bye-bye.
FLD number forty, fifty-five Cottage Road, has this also been withdrawn?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the withdrawal of FLD number forty.
Without prejudice?
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie Lad. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All in favor? Other business, resolution to create the POCD steering committee.
Let's get going.
Let's get going. I agree. So I, I, I failed to realize that we actually needed a motion to create this commission or the committee. So that's why this is back before you, and I gave you the letter itself. So the big thing is, I just, just to confirm with you that we're gonna just have the Board of Ed, Conservation and Ag, Economic Development Commission, Inland Wetlands, Town Council, and zoning Board of Appeals. And then all the other smaller boards and commissions would be invited when the elements are being discussed.
Do we have specifically that some, you know, public members at large? In terms of, you know, have we defined how many of those we were gonna have? Because I, I think that we definitely were talking about adding at least a farmer and possibly a businessman, and maybe, you know, some local people, maybe a maximum of four, you know, public at large. Just so that we're not necessarily just, you know, commissions and boards, get some public input.
So that farmer, business owner. Anybody else, or maybe two of each, or?
Or, 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 you know, or, you know, retail, you know, I, I know we have a lot of retail in, in Enfield, and it would be good to have their perspective as to, you know, how things go and.
How about the Chamber of Commerce? Rich, how about the guy from the Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, and, and, you know, whoever we think, you know, I'm sure.
No, I meant for retail.
Yep, yep, that's fine, yes.
What about somebody from the square, Rich?
Yeah, I mean, if they wanna participate, you know, the, the thing is, we're, we're looking for, for definitely to develop their property in a more inventive way, or, you know, using as much creativity as possible. And if you can get them involved, and, and I think that, you know, having, you know, Goman and York, who do a lot of analysis of, you know, how to jumpstart retail and how to make retail, you know, functional and profitable, I think that, you know, they, they might benefit significantly from being on our board.
I agree, I agree.
So, I, you know, did, did you want me to try to get somebody like, you know, Adam Winstanley or somebody from this group?
And somebody, a developer would be greatly appreciated, you know, you know. And if, if we can get somebody like Winstanley, or, you know, some from, somebody from the square, that would be.
Well, what if we did Winstanley as the businessman?
Yes.
Let's face it, he has the majority of the larger business parcels. You've got somebody from the square who's our retail side.
Yep.
And, and that puts two very strong-minded people at the table who have creative ideas for upcoming properties and distressed properties that are really the backbone of our community. So, along with a farmer, maybe one of the larger farmers, we reach out to Jarbock or Raffia or somebody and see if they'd be interested.
Yeah, Raffia would be good.
Or even Collins, in terms of.
Collins, yeah, I, I didn't mean to cut anybody out, but, yeah.
You want one? So like, I mean, I, I guess I'm, we were looking at doing one to two people per commission. Do you want just one representative from farmers, or do you want two?
One.
Yeah, one.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I'll have a farmer, somebody from retail, hopefully, somebody from NAMDA.
Somebody from Winstanley.
And somebody from Winstanley.
They're an active restaurant association in town?
Then North Central Chamber.
Yeah, they'd be part of that.
The Restaurant Association, Charlie, be part of Chamber.
Yeah.
How about Rotary?
We can't, we can't invite the entire town.
I was gonna say, if you make it too big, it'll be unwelded.
It's pretty big, it's pretty big now.
Already big.
Yeah, so, I mean, Rich, are you good with the choices?
Yes, 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 definitely.
So maybe if we reach out to Nadmar and Winstanley, see if they're interested. Contact, or, you know, if a couple of the farmers are listening to us, if they're interested, they could call in and ask to be part of it. And I, see how it goes from here.
Okay, and so I will send out the letter that I attached to all the boards and commissions so they can start designating whoever they feel would be, would be the best and are willing.
Okay, and now you need a motion to approve this?
Yes, I think I gave you a motion to approve.
Resolution.
I give you a motion.
Does somebody have that resolution? I don't have it.
Of the Enfield Plan of Conservation and Development Steering Committee and to send the invitation out to the referred boards, commissions, and/or council.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seven in favor, none against, thank you. Correspondents?
I don't have anything.
Sounds good. Lori?
I'm good.
All right, I can barely breathe here. So commissioners, correspondents?
Just one question to Lori. On the council meeting, that in order to have a winter farmers' market, you actually have to have a farmer with fresh produce. So I guess that whole idea's been kind of put on hold, yes?
Oh, you guessed wrong.
Did you find a farmer?
We found some farmers, and we actually fall under flea market.
We don't allow flea markets.
Yeah, I know. Don't say flea market.
We're not going to say that, but we fall under that, so.
Don't, don't.
Farmers market.
But we, I mean, we want the part, we want the farmers there. So we did find two to, two to four of them. Two, I know one's absolutely committed. The other one is probably committed, then the other two are kind of escalating, so.
Okay, my next question is, is we're into the winter months, and how many, I mean, how are they gonna have fresh produce during the winter? That's.
So it's, you know, butternut squash, things like that. Turnips are coming in right now.
What about snow peas?
Yes. Yep, they're coming in now.
There you go, I guess snow peas are coming in now, too.
They're only gonna last for so long.
I was being sarcastic. I didn't even know that.
My friend, you know, kale is also a winter crop as well. I mean, they can grow all sorts of things, and a lot of them have just stored it, you know, in a cold storage, so they could have it through the winter.
And it is gonna be in the mall, so.
Yep, yep, we, I don't know whether it's gonna happen this weekend, but that's what our goal is, is to actually open it this weekend.
Great.
Sunday?
Yep, eleven to three.
Thank you.
The sign should be going up tomorrow, but we, we're just waiting for final approval from North Central Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? I have one thing, is we need to look at our rules, because I, I don't understand why we just had to vote on the officers again, when we just voted on them in December. So wouldn't it make more sense just to do it in December? When, when the commission turns over, new commission starts, we vote in the board, and then you do your two years.
Was that because, did, did we do that just because Charlie Durin left?
Well, we had new members, too.
Yeah, and you had new members, but, I mean, you know, that's why we should, should review the bylaws and, you know, make that change, if that's what you'd like to do.
Well, it's just, my point is that any, any member, unless they resign, they're up in December. So if there is a chance the chairman boots, you know, you guys get sick of me and you boot me out next December, you're gonna be a new chairman in December, not in Ja, uh, July. So I would think the first meeting with the new members, we should select the board. I mean, what do you think, Charlie? Why did you guys, or Jenny, why did you guys do it this way?
We used to do it, we used to do it the first meeting after the holidays. The mayor would come and second.
The bylaws, and it says, you know, section, election of officers, Article seven. A biannual organization meeting shall be held in January of numbered years, at which time officers will be elected and bylaws reviewed and made part of the minutes of the biannual meeting or meeting. The meeting shall be chaired by the mayor until the election of a chairman. But it definitely says, you know, the first meeting in January.
Yeah, that's what we always did.
Well, we did it. That's what I'm saying, so why did we have to just do it again?
Because the mayor showed up.
Well, I thought you guys wanted a hostile takeover here, and there was gonna be a.
No, no.
We, we do it like they do in Brazil.
No, I thought that, Jen, I thought we had read that they were supposed to have been done in September of the, or am I thinking with different commission now?
Different commission.
Could be a different commission. I, honestly, I, I didn't double-check.
We're all set for the next year, but we.
All right, so.
We can look at the bylaws of, maybe at the next meeting of this. I don't think, so far, there's not a lot on.
Good.
Well, I mean, we don't need to, this particular thing, if Rich, what Rich read is right, then it's everything I just said, because this doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we always did, so.
Yes.
Attention to what's going on, especially staff, you know, I think that, you know, again, I don't want to harp on things, but I think that, you know, regulations are regulations and bylaws are bylaws. And we can't guess or assume that we know what's going on. We really need to look at, you know, what the regulators say, what the bylaws say, and, and do things accurately. Because we are, we're, we're getting too loose and too cavalier as to, oh, you know, it just really doesn't matter. But it does. In terms, we need to be professional at what we're doing as much as possible.
And that's why I said this makes no sense, but you just read it, so what you read makes total sense. I understand what you're talking about in, you know, the backside of this, but you win some, you lose some, and.
Well, everybody you voted in is gonna be here for January, so.
Commissioner, terms of three years, correct?
Yeah, but they're wrote, they're alternating.
Oh, yeah, they're four, I guess.
Lori, does staff let us know when our term is coming up? Jen, does staff let us know when our term is coming up for renewal?
I mean, we, we can. I mean, you could look it up anytime you want to go on to the website.
I think the town manager's office will let you know, Jenny.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'm not good with dates.
Two to three or four years.
The health board was.
Two to three or four-year term, I believe it's, three or four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
That will usually tell me.
All right, all set, commissioners?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, administrative approval, town planner report, I'm sorry.
We're doing the farmers' market, winter farmers' market at the Enfield Square. We just got funding to expand the community gardens.
Oh, I saw that.
And there may be some other planting-type things coming up, but nothing's been decided.
Well, they can.
Great.
That's good for now.
Jen, you have anything?
Um, uh, nothing other than under the applications to be received, that Twenty-One Manning Road.
Yeah.
That we were thinking of putting on as a special permit. For, uh, right before the, uh, meeting on November sixteenth. So Monday. Um, so, uh, the meeting starts at six o'clock, um, this coming Monday. Um, and the, really the, um, the point of the meeting is to meet with the consultant for the zoning regulations update. And, um, Lori has, I think, a little more information on, on that portion of the meeting. But, uh, before we go, we dive into that part, uh, we're looking to hear Twenty-One Manning Road first. Um, and then go into POCD stuff and zoning regulation update.
It, it really should be very simple. Um, the, the scuttle companies coming in, they're importing garlic and, um, just taking over the building. If it wasn't an agricultural use, you wouldn't even be seeing it. But it become, uh, not an agricultural use, but an agricultural product.
The whole building over?
They're taking the whole building over and they're going to import garlic and process it and distribute it. They're going to have like one truck a week.
Process mean?
They're going.
Grind it up.
They're going, they're going.
It'll smell good down there.
They're going to peel it, that you're not going to smell a thing.
Oh, really?
Okay.
I love this.
They're going to, they're going to peel it and, you know, either put it in as whole cloves or minced or paste or whatever. Just put it in whatever they want to put it in and, and just distribute it.
Thank you.
Aside from the fact that it's, um, you know, a, an agricultural product, you probably wouldn't be seeing this.
And they're going to use the whole building for there?
They are. This is going to be their, like, north, northeast headquarters. They're moving from Florida because of the climate.
Wow.
How about that?
This is a public hearing, though?
Yes.
Public hearing, yes, because it, that the regulations. Not because of Manning Road, because the regulations require that. Actually, I've got it right here. Agricultural products manufacturing and storage requires a special permit.
Yeah, but can we do that since we laid, since we, we labeled next Monday for a special meeting for?
We did because we already advertised for it. It, like you said.
You already warned it for the sixteenth?
We have.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, so, I mean, it's, 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 and I've already talked to Don Poland and, and I said that it should be very quick, so.
Okay.
There's not much to really review. It says, that's what they're doing.
The only concern that I have is Manning Road and, you know, you're saying it's going to be quick, but it's a public hearing, Manning Road. All of those people will probably show up, so.
Yep.
Okay.
That, that's my, I don't, I mean, I'm fine with it, but.
Well, I, I'm, on the lines of what Linda's saying, we were concerned about having enough time to deal with the consultant. And if a lot of people do show up and it takes us two hours, it's going to take away from the important time that we have with the consultant. I kind of, that's where I am with it.
Okay, well, um, it, we, we missed getting it onto the agenda for this meeting and they really needed to get it done. So it was that or set another special meeting.
Yeah.
So what if we move it to after the consultant?
Oh, no.
Well, I mean, before or after, it's the same difference. I don't want to shut out the consultant.
This is our only one time that we got together where we were going to be able to talk to the consultant. We are throwing dates all over the place.
Okay, so, do you want me to set, set a special meeting? It's too late for me to, to set a special meeting.
What's the difference whether they, we hear before or after the consultant?
Doesn't matter.
We can hear him after.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. So that is the consultant amount of time. And if we run over, then they're going to have to come back. Because I don't want to get the consultant to have to come back.
No, I understand, but it was one of these things where, uh, it, there was some miscommunication and we didn't get it onto this agenda. And I promised that we would get them on as soon as possible because they are trying to close a deal on the building.
Lori, I would have your back in a heartbeat, but Manning Road is never that simple. And I don't want to sell the people short.
Okay.
Alrighty.
We'll put it on for after.
Alright.
On the agenda. Perfect.
Uh, that's it for that. Opportunities, unresolved issues, planning and zoning and wetlands. I know that Paul hasn't done anything with that yet, so I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made by Linda and seconded by Jenny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Feel better.
Alright, thank you.
Feel better soon, Ken.
Alright, you guys have a great night. Thank you.
Good night.